Board meeting, it's March twenty eighth, Tuesday, six thirty six. So, I see we have some younger folks with us today. Thank you for coming out and hopefully we don't, well, we won't bore you to death because you'll probably leave after you're done. But, but stay as long as you'd like, so. We will ask a board member, I want to excuse our esteemed President Hanson, who is not with us this evening. He was just on a call with us, but he's out of town and won't be with us, so we'll excuse him tonight. And we'll ask Mary Ann to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start off tonight by turning the time over to Lanay King. And she has a couple of celebrations to share with us, so if you want to come up to the mic and we'll let you have the floor.
I sure do, and I'm thrilled to be here. Board members and superintendent, it's an honor to be here. I get a couple of opportunities tonight to let you in on what I think you guys spend so much time creating, which is, you know, the vision and direction and committing resources to make these great things happen. But you don't often get to play in the same sandbox that we are in and get to enjoy some of the great things that are happening. I'm going to begin by recognizing our sterling scholars tonight. And of course, they're not just products of Wasatch High School. The majority of them are products also of the elementary schools in our district and the middle schools, the families in our county. And this is just a really fun opportunity for you to see their faces and connect with some of their accomplishments. So I'm going to ask them to stand when I mention their names, deal? That way you can, we're all ready. They just got back from region competition where they had a spectacular showing, represented all of us very, very well. So here we go. Albert Bala, instrumental music, was a runner-up at region competition. Next up in agricultural science, we have Noel Wilkerson. And I think Albert stays standing, will ya? In vocal performance, Hannah Rigby was our Wasatch winner, excuse me, region winner. Next up in dance, there was Drew Russell. There she is, who was a runner-up at region. In English, Jonah Sterling, who is a winner. In mathematics, Lindsay Beulman. Next up in science, Madeline Hinckley, runner-up at region. In skilled and technical science, we have Cameron Bray, who's not here with us tonight. Visual arts, we have Scout Fisher, you hear Scout? There you are. Excellence, let's see. World languages, Caitlin Simper, who was a runner-up at region. Business and marketing, Caitlin Lewis. Caitlin's not here tonight. Computer technology, Jarrett Sorensen, who is a runner-up at region and headed to the best university in the world. And our general scholarship, overall region winner, goes to Ethan David Scott. Would you please join me in? While they're still standing before their knees get shaky, I just want to tell you that I heard from so many people who were at the competition, both locally and at region, just not only on their conduct during the competition, but in the hallways and conversations with others, always, not always from our school, that they represented us with a lot of class. They were dressed well, well spoken, their behavior was spectacular. They're all the things that we would hope would represent Wasatch County School District. So from the administrators, all five of us, we just want them to hear in front of the board that you were everything we hoped you would be, and we're really proud of you, so thank you. And you can sit down. Jenna, did I miss you? I never could write at you.
It's okay, I wasn't able to hear.
So Jenna, stand up. No big deal, it's just our student body president, who made eye contact with me earlier, we even had a conversation. Jenna, come stand right next to me, we're going to make her really uncomfortable since I screwed up.
We're not just going to single her out, you're all going to get a stand next to her in a few rounds.
All right, there we go.
I think we want to hear from all of you, so it'll be good.
Jenna, I'd like you to tell them really quickly your favorite part of competing at region.
Um, okay, I, do you want me to go on the microphone?
Yes, I would.
Okay. So I was actually not able to compete at the region competition, unfortunately, because I was at a different scholarship competition. I was one of two Utah delegates for the United States Senate Youth Program. So it's a ten thousand dollar scholarship, and then we spent a week in Washington DC just meeting with different political leaders and learning about government and public service. So that was a really great opportunity, but I'm super sad I wasn't able to compete in region with the rest of the Sterling Scholars.
Wonderful.
Super proud of Jenna. Would you like to hear from them all?
So we would like to see how well spoken as sister.
Yeah, there you go, I set you up.
Each of you are, so if you would each come to the mic and tell us your, tell us your name again, and what are your plans going forward?
Come up.
And then remain up here, we're going to get a picture of you all in the front before you leave.
Let's put all of you just right in line so we can go connect to the other.
My name is Noel Wilkerson, I was the Agricultural Sciences Sterling Scholar. I mean, I think the only reason I did this was just because of the, the confidence that I felt from the agricultural program at Wasatch. And I don't think if, if that wasn't a thing, then I don't know, I don't think I would have done it. I don't know if I would have had, I just don't think I would have had the confidence to put myself out there like that.
What are some of the things you participated in, in the ag program?
I did FFA for a few years, and I did, I did ag mechanics for three years.
Nice.
And, yeah.
Great, thank you, thanks.
Where are you headed?
I want to go to UBU.
Cool, awesome. Congrats.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jarrett Sorensen, the computer tech winner. And I was very thankful for the many opportunities I've had through Wasatch High School to have such a wonderful time with computers and technology. The growing programming classes and the CAPS program were both very influential and helpful in growing my experience and my love of this field. And I'm looking forward to being able to continue growing in that regard at Brigham Young University, searching for ideally a software engineering major, but something in the field. I'd just like to say thank you.
You want a part-time job, you could just come sit in my office with me and keep me on the right path when something doesn't go right on my computer, so.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, oh, it's at me. Hi, guys, I'm Ethan, I'm the General Sterling Scholar. I don't really know how to describe my education since I'm the General Sterling Scholar, so I could pull out my transcript, but that might take a while. So I'll just say that I have had the privilege of enjoying a lot of different classes. And since I'm the General Sterling Scholar, I think I have a special ability to testify just how much enrichment there is in the unique breadth of courses offered at Wasatch, because that's something kind of characteristic that they're looking for in a General Sterling Scholar, and it's also something that I have just been consistently amazed by, the opportunities, the amazing range of, of things that you're able to do at Wasatch, of interests that you're able to pursue, of careers that you're able to prepare yourself for. And that's something that I'm remarkably grateful for, so, there you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Where are you headed, Ethan?
Um, I will probably be headed to the University of Utah in the fall for a double major in applied physics and creative writing. And I hope to also do a stint with the Peace Corps.
Very cool, wow, congratulations.
I love your Wasatch colors, I want to point that out. Because I like, I love the Wasatch colors and I try to dress up like that too. But thanks for pointing out that, you know, I think that's something that the district and the high school really work hard to do, is to have a wide range of opportunities for students. So thanks for pointing that out and congratulations.
Okay, I'm Jenna Mahoney, and I was the Social Science Sterling Scholar. And I'm just very grateful for the opportunities I've had growing up in the Hebrew Valley and going through the Wasatch High School, or like just all the schools in the Wasatch District. I think it's definitely fostered my love for public service and community service and leadership. There's just so many opportunities for students to grow and to succeed. I've been involved in lots of different like service organizations and student government throughout high school, and those have kind of put me on the path that I'm on now, and I'm very grateful to that, for that. And I'm planning on going to Brigham Young University in the fall and pursuing a degree in international relations. Thank you.
Hi, I'm, I'm Madeline Hinckley, I'm the Science Sterling Scholar. And I think the, I've also had a lot of opportunities in Wasatch County, especially with CAPS as well. I was there along with Jarrett, I was in the medicine and health, I was in medicine and health section. But I've also had a lot of opportunities at school, in clubs, and with intermountain healthcare, I was able to do an internship, internship through them where I got to shadow a lot of doctors. So, that's what I've done. For college, I'm going, I'm probably going to go to the University of Utah this fall. And even though I'm the Science Sterling Scholar, I do plan on majoring in Japanese, but I'll be doing a pre-med track on the way.
That's cool, congratulations.
I'm, I'm a French major and I am a physical therapist, so don't worry about it.
I'm Hannah Rigby, and I was the Vocal Performance Sterling Scholar. All through high school, I had the opportunity to perform, uh, perform in a lot of different performances, I guess. In lots of, in various performances through the theater group and, and theater classes, and also in choir and with orchestra as well. And I think that those classes and specifically the teachers and the peers I, I got to perform with really developed, developed, helped me develop as a, as a person and as a musician. I plan to attend UBU in the fall, and those are my plans.
Hannah, why don't you tell the board the message that you got today about Bright Star? So Hannah was in Bright Star.
Yeah.
I want to call her Daryl.
Yeah, so I, I got to be in the production of Bright Star for, at Wasatch High School, and we decided to take it to region theater as a one act. And we found out today that we're taking it to state.
Right.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
You did such a great job in the.
Hi, my name is Drew Russell, I'm the Dance Sterling Scholar. And dance is a unique Sterling Scholar position, I would say, because there's not many opportunities for dance at the school besides just a few classes. So I've been blessed to be able to train outside of Wasatch High School at a studio called Utah Arts Collective, where I've danced competitively, competitively since I was five years old. I've trained in ballet, jazz, contemporary tap, hip hop, ballroom, many different styles. And something that I've really loved about the Sterling Scholar competition is that I've been able to not only show what I can do dance-wise, but also academic-wise, because there isn't much correlation between those as there is for other subjects or categories. And in the fall, I plan to go to the University of Utah or University of Arizona and major in industrial design.
All right, congratulations.
Hola, me llamo Caitlin Simper. Hi, I'm Caitlin Simper, and I'm the World Language Sterling Scholar. I am a product of the Spanish Dual Language Emergent Program here at Wasatch and specifically Hebrew Valley Elementary. And because of my second grade Spanish teacher, Maestro Pidi Zalaya, I actually want to be a teacher myself. So this fall, I plan to attend Utah State University and pursue a major in elementary education with a minor in Spanish.
I didn't hear anything.
Oh, okay. Caitlin and I live in the same neighborhood, and I'm so proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I'm Lindsay Beulman, I'm the Math Sterling Scholar. I guess I just like math, we have a lot of good math classes and teachers, and all of my peers have helped me to learn the, the facts and, and be able to memorize the, the things that I need to. And it's just a, I love doing math and putting the pieces together in addition to the rest of school. Like Caitlin, I want to be a teacher, so I go, I'm going to BYU Idaho in the fall and majoring in elementary education, probably with a minor in mathematics.
Awesome, congratulations.
Congratulations, Lindsay.
Hi, I'm Scout Fisher, and I was the Visual Arts Sterling Scholar. And a lot of my best portfolio pieces, I have to give credit to the classes that I took when I created them. My best paintings that I had at the Sterling's Dollar Competition were from my AP Studio Art class, Top of Mr. Mellon, that just facilitated a really great creative environment for me to push myself artistically. And I haven't taken as many art classes this year, and I've definitely felt it. Like I, I need those classes and those mentors to help me improve my art and keep these big projects going. And I also have to give a shout out to Ms. Casey Payne, I don't know if any of you guys know her. She's an amazing teacher, and she gave me lots of incredible opportunities through Educators Rising. I actually made it to Nationals last year with a children's book that I wrote and illustrated, and that was a super amazing opportunity and a great thing to add to my Sterling Scholar portfolio. On the topic of teaching, I am planning on going, attending Utah State University in Logan and majoring in education. I've also been thinking about majoring in art and taking, doing, pursuing a career in art for a while and then becoming an art teacher after that, and different things like that. But I know that ultimately, when I'm older, I want to be an art teacher so I can inspire other kids to find their creative voices and do art, just like I did when I was in high school.
Awesome. Congrats.
Uh, hi, I'm Albert Bala, and I was the Sterling Scholar for instrumental performance. I've been involved with the music program in the school district for, since about like fifth grade. I started with Mr. Sigurd, I'm trumpet, and I have just been involved in that for, yeah, for a long time. And now I'm on, I'm playing trombone. And I've been involved in the, the marching band, high school marching band. I've done all four seasons of my high school career there with that band. And it's taught me a lot about, like, social skills, how to be a leader. I was the low brass section leader for two years of those four. Also these past two years, I've qualified for the All-State Win Symphony. And that was a really great privilege to do, perform with all those incredible musicians. And my plans for the future, I am planning on going to Montana State University, following my brother up there. I'm planning on majoring in, something in computer science or in that kind of category, and definitely studying music as well.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Bert was also in Bright Star.
I'm, I'm Jonah Sterling, I'm the English Sterling Scholar. And at risk of repeating my fellow scholars, I'm truly grateful for the absolutely incredible English program that we have at the Wasatch High School. It has been a wonderful experience to be a product of that program and to participate it, participate in it in creative writing and language and reading and writing and literature courses. And it's been very exciting to watch my fellow students as well come out of their shells and branch out in their academic outreaches, which has been a wonderful thing to experience. I am the founder of the Wasatch Poets Society, and I have a lot of interest in bringing written and spoken art into the high school and making that a part of my life and helping it become a part of other people's lives. For college, I plan to attend the University of Iowa and major in creative writing before entering into postgraduate study, hopefully at the University of Edinburgh.
Wow. Very cool, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, I want to thank each of you for coming out and spending a little time with us tonight. You've represented yourself well, and you've represented Wasatch County School District well, so thank you for that. I wish you just all the success in the world as you continue your education, and I know the type of people that you are, you'll be very successful, so, thank you.
Yeah.
And you're welcome to join us, or?
Let's get a picture.
Well, yeah, let's get a picture.
All right, come up here. We'll get a picture of all of you.
Come right up next in front of the table, right here. Sort of assign yourselves, like, arrange yourselves taller and back. Not as tall in front. Not as far as. Who are you? Who are you? Back there. That is Chinese. And then, and then look at the board on either side. And then. Yeah. And then. 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 If you would look at me, Bert, this is what point five means for it.
Hey, we have your advisor, he's.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah. And then. 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 But point five stretches the people on the end, so when it's point five, you don't want to be personal. So, good.
It's about the ladder, but it takes out.
That's a good joke. Right here. Thank you so much, congratulations.
Just make a note that. We're going to do two different public conversations. Or maybe one of them's what she told me. Then in the middle, the public hearing for the. Great story. It was a, it was a healthier, good to hear.
You did such a great job.
Right, it's cool.
Obviously, my daughter's in theater, so I've been watching all the shows.
Well, other than knowing Jenna a quench it tomorrow, luckily she likes me enough, I think she'll be okay. Next, I'd like to recognize another section of Wasatch County School District. I have always been really proud of belonging to a district where I felt like the word "all" actually meant something, it wasn't just lip service that was paid. I've always felt like the people that I worked with, from the board, down to the administrators, and even into the classroom, actually serviced to the word "all" with a lot of integrity. Part of this new position means that I get to be in charge of Wasatch Adult Education, and this might be a part where "all" really needs a little bit of a stretch sometimes. It can be easy to forget in a K-12 setting that there, there is a really big need for Was, for an adult education program. I have four people here that I'm going to recognize shortly that have helped me grow a program into what I think is really, it's a movement. And I've said that before, but you can go ahead, Stacy. Let me show you where we were. Last May, we had four students in adult ed, four. We've increased that by ten times. We now stand at forty-one students who are in a diploma or GED program. There is not a program in the state that has had a bigger percentage of growth than Wasatch Adult Education. That includes fourteen English GED-seeking students. Oh, sorry, go back one more, sorry, my bad. Twenty-one Spanish GED-seeking students and six diploma-seeking students. It's an expansion of that program. We also have an English program, which I'll highlight in a moment. Thank you, Stacy, next one. I want you to just kind of get a picture of what that means. So with our four students, my coordinator, Svetlana, and I sat down over the summer and said, "Okay, we've got to rebrand this thing, something has got to change." I know that there are needs in the county, we're not servicing them, something about this program is not attracting people to what we're doing. And I became possessed with the idea of offering a GED program. So she and I spent some great, a great deal of time this summer talking to everybody we could find, and there was nobody willing to share what they did in their GED programs. There's a lot of territorial attitudes in that, in that world, and there isn't a way to do it. There's no core curriculum like there is in a K-12 setting. And so I ordered some books from Amazon, we made a flyer, I had Curst to post it on social media, and I said, "Well, let's just get going and figure it out." I later wrote a grant for some, some software, but with an incredible staff, it has grown into something. In just a few short months. In just a few short months, we have two students that are all the way through the program. Our first finisher is up there, that top picture. And I just want to give you one story because we're going to humanize this just a little bit. There is a student in the GED program that has successfully passed all three tests and is one test away from being done. This is a student I remember from Rocky Mountain. I can clearly, because he is unique, remember him walking into a seventh grade history class full of excitement. He was, he was this, he was kind of an awkward kid, but so excited about the topic and anxious to raise his hand for every question. He quickly figured out, that's not the right term, but it is what it is in middle school, that, that he wasn't always appreciated by his peers. And a few months into that year, he stopped talking. And a few months later, he stopped attending. And that trend continued on into high school, whereby at the end of his sophomore year, he was so credit deficient, he was referred to alternative. The problem was, for a lot of reasons, he doesn't fit into a system. And I think he had a real lack of self-confidence, so I referred him to our adult ed program. And I have watched our two GED facilitators work one-on-one with this kid. It is a beautiful thing to watch a kid who doesn't fit other places fit here. And he is so close to watching his world open up. Our Spanish GED program began only two and a half months ago. I have to give Diana Carvajal credit for pestering me to death to make sure that I made this happen. In only two and a half months, our teacher, Jacob Villagrasa, has already gotten two students to pass their first test and has successfully prepared 11 more and registered them for their first GED test. There are a lot of human interest stories that, that are gripping for me. I'm going to share just a couple, just because I want you to, I want you to enjoy this a little bit. We have one student who's been in the country a year from Honduras, came with a sixth grade education, cannot go to high school because he works full-time to support his basic needs and that of his family. So he comes every once in a while, and Jacob prepares GED materials outside of his classes, like you see in that picture, just for this kid to take home and study. This kid's avidly working on the American dream, and he will get there, and opportunities will open up because of that. And then there's another one that I just love. There was a student at Wasatch High last year that all of us as administrators used to find in the nooks and crannies of the school, literally. And her hoodie was always pulled up, and the mask was on, and she hid, couldn't get her to talk. She was referred over to alternative and has blossomed. The hood is down now. She'll engage in conversation, but because of her positive experience there, when we had our Spanish GED registration night, the first of January, she walked in with her mom. She brought her Spanish-speaking mother to that program, and she drives her there every week because she wants her mom to experience the success that she's had in that same building. Pretty beautiful stuff. I want to highlight our English classes. Brent Price is our English teacher. He's been there a long time and conducted a successful program. We currently have about two dozen students. We've modernized it the last little bit in an effort to just keep the buzz going. And last week, we got every one of those students their own license so that they could use your own device, which you see in those pictures. This is the ability to now practice the English with something interactive, anywhere, anytime. And you went and just, there's just so much excitement about adding a modern approach to an already successful program. I'm just really, really proud to be associated with these people, and I'm going to ask them to stand. We've got Svetlana Griffiths, who is my coordinator. As an immigrant from Ukraine, she probably understands a lot of where a lot of these immigrant learners are coming from. And although she came with a college degree, right, but, but her ability to connect with those people has been, has been important, and her commitment to the program has led it. I can call her all the time, and I do on a regular basis, "Yeah, I need some help." And she's off-contract or out of, you know, off the clock, so to speak, and always willing to help me. Charles Cummins, who is a high, high school administrator from California, we snagged him. He helps facilitate our GED program. His inside-out knowledge of how public ed works, how to, how to build lessons, how to reach kids wanting to do good in the world has been an incredible asset to that program. Next up, I've got Jacob Villagrasa, who, I murder his name, and I wish I could say it as beautifully as he does in Spanish. He is from Spain and a teacher at Midway in our DLA program, who teaches here for me in the afternoon. He comes with lessons prepared outside of anything in the software or the books. He prepares worksheets on his own time. It, it's been an incredible thing to watch him build. I come at night to watch. I tell him all the time, "It looks awesome. I have no idea what you're saying." And so I really, when I come to just evaluate what's going on in those Spanish GED classes, I go off what their, the facial expressions are of the students and the engagement I see, and it's spectacular. What he's done in two and a half months is, is awesome. Brent Price, who does a lot in the district with ELL students. And I love the fact that he's extended it all the way past K-12 into the adult learner category. He's been an asset to this program for many years, and I appreciate his willingness to add another modern tool to his toolkit so that we can offer those opportunities to more and more. Our diploma program. Absolutely. I appreciate that, Sean. Our diploma program, we have now got an accredited system that uses current course standards. And we've also developed a rollover program so that we try to capture the students who don't quite, quite make it by May 18th this year and still want to graduate with their class. So the system has been set up to do that. And right there, you see one of those who benefited from that program just a couple of months ago. Last one. So I'm just going to end with this. We have talked a few times about wanting to create a movement. Our goal from Wasatch Adult Education is that we aim to change not only the trajectory of individual lives, but of the families of Wasatch County. This is what happens when a mom goes back. A 40-year-old mom who hasn't been in school for two decades, but her teenager drives her there. This is what happens when a 16-year-old from Honduras comes, and now is supporting his family, can now do so on a, on a much more, on a higher level. And so on June 1st at 6:00 PM, we are going to hold our first annual Wasatch Adult Education Family Recognition Night. Consider this your first invitation. I'll make sure and remind you to get closer. You are more than invited. The idea is we want families to come and see what mom or dad or brother did in adult education because the entire family will benefit as a result, and we want to celebrate that. I'm super proud to be a part of that program, incredibly honored to be working amongst the four of them, and grateful that I come from a district and work underneath the board and superintendent whose vision supports what we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Linay.
I, I cannot think of a better person to lead this charge. I, I've watched you a little bit over at the alt school, and wow, she's amazing. Holy cow. Amazing. The, the love that you share for all of your students and just, I don't know. It's amazing. I, I just encourage anybody to go over there and just watch what Linay does and your team.
But we all do, yeah.
Yeah, you and your, your team of teachers and supporters and everybody, so thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to all of you. The district I was in before as well, so I taught night school. I taught those kids that didn't have spot, who fell behind. And we had one who straight up asked me, "Can my mom start coming?" And we weren't in a position where we were, we could do that. And so I just want to say personally, thank you so much because it does, it, you're changing generations with one, one person, whether it's a student, an adult. You are changing generations that will come after them, and that is massive, and I cannot thank you enough. So thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Paul.
Well, we appreciate you guys being here tonight, and it is such an important program for our, our community. And, and I'm excited to meet some of the new teachers that are here. And Brent and I go way back and glad to have him helping out at adult ed now. And he's, he's helped out just wherever he's been asked. And, and Linay, we're finding out, I mean, most people, I guess, all, always knew this, but does not matter what you put this talented woman in charge of. She will make it the best there is in the state without fail, and we, we really appreciate all your hard work. Thank you. Let's get a picture of the, of the four teachers and Linay.
Before I sit down.
Do you have something else you'd like to say?
I have one more thing I'd like to say. It has to do with some yummy pie that is sitting upstairs. I know that you've seen it, but on behalf of all five of us high school administrators, there needs to be a public declaration of thanks. And I want to not just make that a, a general thank you. The thanks in this case comes from the support that you've given us with all the hiring that we've had to do to accommodate the growth. I wish the public could see more often. It's too bad that the room isn't full here tonight to know that with just the unprecedented growth that continues to go on, we've absolutely had to hire more people, and we've had nothing but support from all of you. And so I want you to enjoy the pie, and with each sweet bite, just know how much you are appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please tell the other administrators, thank you, and we appreciate them, and, and we love and appreciate you, so thank you. Okay, that's the fun part of our meeting. Now we'll get it down to the business. We have two sections of public comment that we need, we need to do tonight. So first is just open public comment, and so the time is yours if anyone has something. And Stacy, if there's any online. I think we've paused long enough. We'll move on, so. The second, the second portion is some public comment specifically to school fees. So we'll open that up. And do we have any online? We will close the section of our public comment then, so. That was easy tonight. Next, we have consent items. Hope you've been able to.
I just might mention President Holmes, that there were, there were some, there were some comments that were emailed in. I think the board has all seen those, so that's, that's been officially entered into the record as well.
Right, and we will talk about that in a minute, so. So consent items, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the consent items as outlined.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And Tom isn't here, aye? And any opposed? Motion passes. And we'll move on to our action items. Mr. Zach Bredsgaard will be up for the first two.
Thank you. Wish I was half as well-spoken as those kids were. I talk to you all almost every day or monthly, and I'm still nervous to be up here, so. So the first item I have is the proposed capital projects list for fiscal year '24. If you guys would like to go through it item by item, if you just want to ask questions, if you have them, what, what you would prefer, but I'm happy to discuss every one of them if you'd like, so.
Yeah, we have the docs.
So.
So what will happen here is, is the board's considering this. This is for next fiscal year. This starts July 1st. And then as these things go out to bed, Zach will bring them and let you know how the, what the final price was. This is, this is just the budget for capital projects for next year.
And Zach, what would like to see is when you bring these back, you say, "Hey, I had $40,000 for the deck repair. It actually came in at $36,000," so.
I'd like to see that.
That's what we're looking for.
Francis trained him well.
I do.
I hope.
I have a question. Equipment, what's the equipment purch, I mean, like, is that broken down?
So on the district one, is that what you're looking at? So the, the grounds equipment, I guess we have it on there. We're probably just getting an aerator this year instead of, we haven't decided aerator trim over. The equipment purchase itself, we're getting a mini excavator for the district. We've needed one for years. We spend an average of $10,000 to $12,000 a year renting one, so. We're just to that point that it's, you know, we're, we're only using it a quarter as much as we'd like to because of the cost of rent, so. We've, we've pushed it back for, I think the second year I started here, I asked for one, and we're finally getting to where we feel we can get one.
You had to get in charge so you could actually put it on the list.
That's the whole reason. And I don't even get to run it that much anymore, so.
But we do have a couple of people.
Yes, oh yes, definitely.
All right, so Zach, what are you asking for?
Okay, so I, I'd ask that the board would approve the proposed fiscal year '24 capital projects list as written.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The district thanks you.
Buildings thank you.
Zach, you're up again.
All right, my second item is an SOQ, so a statement of qualifications for architectural services for the, the design of the JR Smith roof replacement, which was one of those capital items on the list. So we put out an SOQ to interested architectural firms. We had four responding. They're listed there at the bottom. We put together a scoring committee, and the results was, they selected MHTN architects to design it. It is a fairly small project, but it does need to be engineered and designed properly, so. So my recommendation to the board is that we approve MHTN architects as the, for architectural services for the JR Smith roof, roof replacement.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the SOQ for architectural services for the JR Smith roof replacement as outlined tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Mr. Dr. Jason Wong, you're up.
You have in front of you the positive behavior plans that each school is now required to write. They're brief plans, just enough to show what they're doing as a means of meeting the state requirement for some money the legislature appropriated to, for this purpose a couple of years ago. The state gives $3,000 to each school to, is to be paid as a stipend for somebody who is administering these plans at the schools. Some district, some schools designate one person to get that, another, most of them split it among a few different teachers. And then in addition to that, they get $1,000 in supply money to help them with whatever they need to administer the plan. By statute, these are supposed to be board-approved, similar to maybe a scaled-down version of what the school improvement plans would be. And so each, each school has written up a little, a little summary of what their plan is, and I would recommend that we approve the positive behavior plans for the school year.
So moved. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any further discussion? Motion passes. Mr. Wes Bingham.
Thank you, board. So Todd Johnson couldn't be here tonight and has asked me to go ahead and uncover the fee schedules. Again, the fee schedules have gone through the process of being noticed and reviewed publicly and to.
Easily get, you know.
We could send a letter notifying that we need a little more time on it.
In my experience, it hasn't been ever brought up as an issue.
Corey won't be put in jail.
No, I don't think so.
All right, I think the board can, I think the board can table it if you'd like till next month.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to table the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four fee, fee schedule.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes to table that. Okay, Mr. Keith, I think we need to hear from you.
Okay, so the, the school and trust plans for each, each of the schools was approved by the board for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two year, which ended on June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two. We, you know, each school met their, their measurements that they were looking to achieve, and, and the money was spent according to budget, and so we're just, we don't need a motion, I don't believe, it's, it's just, we need to mention in our board meeting, and the board has to acknowledge that, that all the plans were met and budgets were spent accordingly. So, that's all we're doing tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
Superintendent.
I don't have anything other than we are taking off as a group to go to our National School Boards Convention this weekend. This is always a, a great opportunity and time well-spent for the board, and I look forward to, to doing that. If, I, I thought we might can just get together for a few moments to share some information after this meeting. I believe that we could take a few minutes and go over some travel plans and that sort of thing before you, before you exit the building. That's all I have, okay.
Anything else from any board members?
I guess Aldous' report on USBA's regional meeting. Corey was there, Keith was there. It was a good meeting, there was a lot, one hundred and thirty-six education bills in one legislative session, and our directors, bless your hearts, are having to deal with the implications of implementing those massive amounts of bills, and I just want to say I appreciate you guys and all your work, and I know it's a busy time of year, and it's a time of year not a lot of people think about, but when our legislature makes that many bills, it's up to the administration of this district to implement those and follow the laws, and it's a lot of work, and I want to say thank you publicly, so, thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. Meeting's adjourned.